Let your on mute.
Happens every time they put us into the public. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Good evening, everyone. Council agenda, township of Precipity, Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting of May 4th, 2021. Introduction, posting of notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings, while by following notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 18th, 2020, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 22nd, 2020, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers on December 18th, 2020. Note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net. Okay, may I ask everyone to please rise for the flag salute? And the mayor, I turn it over to you, please.
Thank you, Clerk. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. With that, we're going to go ahead and go into the roll call. Mr. Carrify?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy is going to be joining us shortly. Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Yeah.
Okay, also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Fred Carr, CFO Juan Eribey, Township Attorney Jim Law, and we also have with us Jennifer Rizzelli with Genova Burns. With that being said, we're going to go into the upcoming meetings, May 18th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. And regular meeting, that's the regular meeting, and then June 1st, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. is the agenda meeting. Approval of minutes, we have none at this time. Going over to presentations and reports, Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk. And to acknowledge what's behind me right here, Clerk, I hope that you are getting the most out of your fasting during this Ramadan season.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and blessings to you and your family, and to everyone out there who is celebrating Ramadan this month, which will end next Tuesday. So, um, Happy May the 4th to everyone. It's, um, it may have been a frivolous thing back in the day, created by nerds on the internet, but it seems like Star Wars Day has become a thing. But it is, it is a wonderful chance to, certainly in these hard times, to cling to something, a sense of whimsy, but a sense of adventure, and sense of good guys fighting the bad guys to do what's right. On the subject of doing what's right, I would like to announce that barring an uptick in COVID-19 case numbers, that right now we are in the plans for Town Hall and other municipal buildings, and we're expecting them to reopen fully in the week to come. Based on Governor Murphy's, uh, uh, new rulings yesterday, we're going to be following safety guidelines laid out by the state of New Jersey's Health Department. And I'm saying that municipal buildings need to be reopened, and it's a long time coming, and it must be done the right way. We're actively discussing what needs to happen immediately so we can continue to serve the community while protecting both the residents and our employees alike. Now, uh, we had to close municipal buildings to the public on December 7th due to the ongoing spike in new cases of COVID-19 in Precipity. Uh, all township offices and departments continue to operate on their regular schedules, but in-person business and with members of public is conducted through appointment only since December 7th, and we are still doing that currently. And Precipity has seen a significant decline in cases of COVID-19, with just 34 reported in the past week, the lowest new case number since late October. Now, across the state, the rate of transmission has dropped to 0.37%, the lowest it's been in recent memory. Thanks to vaccination rollouts, testing and contact tracing, wearing face masks, social distancing, and continued good hygiene practices, the numbers suggest a downtrend in tolerable risk levels and should provide the opportunity to return to some normalcy in day-to-day operations. Now, municipal operations like Precipity Police Department, garbage, sanitation, water and sewer, township bus, parks and forestry, and municipal courts all continued to function throughout the closed-door period. Additionally, in-person meetings for Township Council, zoning board of adjustment planning board will be announced in the weeks to come as part of the township's reopening efforts, and of course, with approval of the Township Council, for the Township Council and, uh, and the zoning board of approvals, adjustments, will be free to decide their own fate on them. So this is a developing topic, and the Township is going to provide updates to the public as quickly as possible. Also, I want to thank everyone who participated in our Arbor Day celebration this past Friday and parts of Saturday. We had pickups at participating restaurants, as well as in the front of Town Hall. People picked up Dogwoods, Hickory, Maples, Oak, Paw Paw, Persimmon, and I never know how to pronounce that word, by the way, and spruce trees, and it, uh, it was, it's part of our commitment to being a tree city and being recognized by the Arbor, Arbor Day Foundation. I also want to thank the almost 400 volunteers who came up for, uh, for our community cleanup. This, for Earth Day, it was, it was a fantastic way to spend the Saturday after Earth Day. It was from 10 to 2 o'clock. There were people from all over Precipity, and it was the best way to, uh, you know, help our community and the environment and cleaning up. It was, uh, by the way, 4,000 pounds of garbage debris and other refuse was collected. And we intend to do this annually, um, as a, doing the reservoir and the rest of Precipity. We are now, there is so much volunteer interest. We are looking to do this in the fall as well, and to make this an event we do every year, twice a year. So that's certainly putting the pride in Precipity. And that's all I have to report. Clerk, Mr. Council President, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the Township Council, I turn it over to you, Council President, but before I do, I just want to state for the record that Ms. McCarthy is here and that Ms. Grignani is here, but attending telephonically at this time because she's out of state at the moment. With that being said, I turn it over to you, Council President.
Thank you. I have two items that need to be addressed. One is Glen Mount Commons. Um, I spoke to Nancy DiEduardo. She is the Town Home Owner Association President. She disputes some of the information we have regarding private streets. I recommend that they have a meeting with the homeowners association and whoever we had that researched all of the records for Glen Mount Commons also be in attendance at that meeting, and I would be willing to attend also. We owe those people a meeting.
Mr. Council President, we are in the process of setting up that meeting as we speak, and it will, we will have the attorney that did all the research to explain not only everything to Ms. DiEduardo, but the entire board.
Good. You want a council member there at least?
That's up to me.
Well, then let me know where and when.
Understood.
I was also aware that the governor is loosening things up a bit. Uh, we now can go up to 50% of maximum capacity and a maximum 250 individuals. So I was going to recommend tonight that we no longer need to have virtual meetings. We can either have them at the PAL building, and they've reserved, um, our, our time. All of our council meeting times are not until the end of the year. I doubt they will need that, but if we want to start, I'd like to have our May 18th meeting at the PAL building in person.
I will, um, just go back to, uh, just remind everyone that I, the PAL building is available. I just will have to just renotice the meeting, which is not an issue at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Council President, uh, just on a very personal note, I will not be fully vaccinated until May 21st. I do not feel comfortable being in the building, not just for my own safety, but for the safety of everyone around me. I, 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 I wouldn't be able to, uh, I don't want to get someone sick. So I will, uh, I will.
You can wear a mask.
With the clerk on, uh, planning virtually.
You can wear a mask.
I think you need to read the science on this a little bit more about indoor mask gatherings. And really, really, this is, you know, the safety part is for people who are fully vaccinated. I will be, I will be fully vaccinated, and I have to follow the science on this, and Governor Murphy is not loosening up. He's following the science. And I'm going to stick with the science, and once I'm fully vaccinated, I would be, I cannot wait to be back at public meetings and really meeting with people again. Virtual has taken its toll on me too, but I have to follow the science.
Well, I don't see anywhere in here where the governor talks about first or second vaccination. He's talking about currently indoor, indoor events, including proms, weddings, funerals, political events, up to 50% capacity.
Mr. Council President, I will in no way stop you from having your meeting. That's, that's fine. I'm just letting you know that, uh, I'm going to have to remotely attend that one because I will not be fully vaccinated. I have a family, a family that's immunocompromised. I have staff members here in this building I have to protect. Uh, and not only that, you know, since I will not be fully vaccinated, the people around me could be in danger, so I just, I prefer not to do that.
The only, and I just want to just chime in for two seconds. With regards to the public meetings, we're unable, I've spoken to the IT department, we're unable to do virtual and in person. We don't have the capability, so maybe Mayor, we can talk offline about maybe attending telephonically.
That would be fun.
Okay.
I have to hear the council members feel.
So, uh, one second, Ms. Grignani, Councilman Grignani is just talking. Ms. Grignani, can you please repeat that? Because you are on mute. Go ahead.
I would, uh, I would concur with Councilman DePiero. Yes, I would like to get back to in-person meetings.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Grignani. Any other members of council?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, it's bang by me. I, how did the new, um, restriction lifting impact just meeting at Town Hall again?
Well, the only concern we have is we have a large crowd. This is up to 50% capacity. At the PAL building, if, if 100 people show up, we would not, that would probably violate capacity at Town Hall, but it would not violate capacity at the PAL building.
Sure, that makes sense.
Council President, the, it's, for Town Hall, there is no capacity, has never been capacity. It's the six-foot recommended social distance which mathematically kept us from meeting in Town Hall. We would have that same requirement at the PAL. We would just have the chairs, you know, spaced, uh, six feet apart from everybody so that everybody could participate fully in that open area, but they will be seated six feet apart. That's fine.
Yeah, Emily, just to, just to, you know, just further elaborate, the, the building is much, much larger, so, um, even if it's a small group of people, it's, it's going to be much more spaced out that way.
Sounds good.
Any other council members have something?
Yeah, I do. Um, last week we talked about, well, I was interested to find out what happened with the resident with the noise issue, with their neighbor operating a business out of their house. Has anything been, has anything happened on that?
Yes, I can address that. So I spoke with the construction department and the health department. They've sent over, we have a gentleman or two people in the health department who are qualified on the, on to, to bring over the noise or the decibel meter to check the noise, and we're also running the determination whether or not they're allowed to have a business back there. They are not allowed, as you all know, to sell wood back there, but if, it could be unfortunate for the resident with the noise complaint if they're allowed, and I have not heard back from the zoning officer whether or not it's allowed or not, but they are following up on the noise issue in the Board of Health, but they have not contacted me with regards to whether a notice or violation was provided or whether or not it exceeds the law.
Okay, thanks. And the other issue I raised last week, well, there's really two more things. One was the plastic bag. Have we, are we enforcing that now with ShopRite and Foodtown?
No. So right now, my conversation with the Board of Health is that once we're in a position where the health inspectors are not doing COVID stuff, we're going to start this summer with a public information campaign really to ramp up, perhaps with actual enforcement. We're talking about enforcement, a plastic band bag, maybe at the beginning of the school year. Uh, as a, as a possible date where we give them some public information, some outreach, and telling them to remind them all what the rules are before we start issuing summonses.
Well, I mean, has there been any outreach to ShopRite and Foodtown about enforcing it?
Not, 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 not since last year, not since last year, oh ma'am.
Well, I don't understand why they can't make a phone call or someone can't go talk to one of the managers down there, why we have some stores that are enforcing it and some stores not. I, I, you know, it's just very confusing for residents, and in effect, we don't have a plastic bag ban, in effect, so.
We suspended that last year at the beginning of the pandemic.
So we passed the ordinance, but we don't have a plastic bag ban, and we should say that we don't. Because we don't if some can and some can, and ShopRite and Foodtown are probably the worst, probably offer us most of the percentage of that plastic bags that we have. And how you can let some people do it and not others not, I, I just don't understand. Either we have a law or we don't.
Well, it, it's as simple as the law only gets its strength from the application and enforcement, and right now, the people that would enforce that law and hand out the tickets are doing contact tracing, and. Wait, 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 please let me finish, and then you'll be free to, free to say whatever you need to, but, um, what we're understanding that Business Administrator Carr, what he was trying to say there is that as they stop doing stuff, the stuff he's talking about is the contact tracing, and now and once we have that dropping, we can then start using them for enforcement. There is a meeting that's happening this week where we're talking about opening up. That is part of the conversation, and we are looking, right now, we have a pencil date for complete enforcement, okay, which is, I believe it's September 7th or 8th, whichever day is right after Memorial Labor Day weekend. Now, what we want to do this summer is the reminder program. I mean, we still have to have someone physically go to every place, talk to the managers, get that done. That still has to get done. We need to do that through the summer, and then starting September, if you're not in compliance, you will get ticketed. And effectively, what we would like to do, and what we're looking to do is saying, okay, as of this date, let me give an arbitrary date, you know, June, whatever, the plastic bag ban is now in effect, and you should start phasing into it because in September, we will ticket you and we will take it to you hard. But right now, we can't do that without people to.
So there's no way that someone can send a letter or make a phone call and ask them to begin to enforce it, remind them that we have a plastic bag ban? And, and then I assume that the health officers are no longer visiting restaurants?
I can't speak to that, but I, I, I still believe that they are.
That's something we should know. I mean, if they're, they're contact tracing, are they visiting restaurants?
The ones that are open, yes.
Yeah.
So they are visiting them, so can't they visit?
If they have mandatory inspection requirements by the state, COVID or not, they still have to be inspected on a routine basis.
And ShopRite.
What we're saying is that we're not just going to reach out to Foodtown and, and ShopRite, but any business that utilizes the one-time-use plastic bag needs to be brought online on whether or not they can use them or not. There are specifics in the law, as you well know, exemptions, you know, to, in the, the single-use plastic bag, and then the availability of the heavier bag, not the single-use plastic bag ban at places like ShopRite or Foodtown where they can sell you the heavier bag. We intend to have a town-wide information campaign to inform not just the two rest, the two places you talked about, but the entire town, get everybody back up to thinking about the plastic bag ban, other than just showing up at ShopRite and at Foodtown, because their first response, if I was them, is why are you picking on me and you're not picking on the guy next door?
Well, I could ask, I could ask Mr. Carr why your, your, why Target is doing it and, and ShopRite's not.
That would be, that's why we're going to do the full town when we get to that point in the conversation, as the mayor said.
Yeah, but the health officers are going out to places that dispense food.
And do health inspections, yes, as required. Pandemic or not, kitchens still have to be inspected by the Health Department. Yes, ma'am.
And do ShopRite, do ShopRite and Foodtown have kitchens? Do they dispense food?
They're there to check, we like to focus on what they're there for, and if they're there for a food inspection, we like to do food inspections.
Well, I think that was part of the ordinance that they were going to be part of enforcing the plastic bag ban as well, but I see what you're saying about that tonight, so. Okay, I guess I have my answer. The other question was Intervale Road, where the trees were taking down on the water, taking down on the water, water view property. That's a steep slope, as I understand it. Um, and given the negative impact of that environmental area as it is, um, I think it's important that we, uh, we, we handle that steep slope and what, what's going to be planted there going forward. So has there been any guidance from the Environmental Committee or the Highland Council with regard to the steep slope?
Not as of yet. Um, there will be. Right now, what, we have a meeting, myself and Mayor Tom Maynard have a meeting tomorrow with Whole Foods. They have volunteered to put up a shield of trees to block the view of Whole Foods from Intervale Road. That's, that's, that's one step, getting that part done, and then the next part is making sure the erosion is not an issue, but you know, we're, we're going to need some help on that, so it's not just the Environmental Commission or the Highlands. There's also the Shade Tree Commission from, uh, Mount Tabor, I mean, excuse me, from Mountain Lakes as well, will be involved in that.
Yeah, well, I think it would be a good idea to have some, some information from the Highlands Council on that as well.
Sure.
Okay, anything else from council? All right, before we move on, I just want to confirm, just for purposes of notices and sending out notices, that the meeting, upcoming meeting on May 18th will be held at the PAL at 7:00 p.m. Council President, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it appears that the full council is on board. Am I correct in assuming that? I'm going, yes, yes, Mr. Carrify, Ms. Peterson, Ms. Grignani, and Ms. McCarthy? Okay, so with that being said, uh, we're going to go ahead and move on. Township Attorney?
Uh, good evening. I have, uh, two items for close session, as indicated on the agenda. I also asked to have adjourned the public hearing on the stormwater ordinance. We did receive some comments from the planning boards, um, and we're currently looking at that, and we asked to have the public hearing rescheduled for the May 18th meeting.
Yes, um, Mr. Law, we, we received a request. That matter has been removed from the agenda and will be placed back on, on the May 18th meeting.
Right, and we should carry that hearing until, until May 18th, tonight, okay?
Okay, it's not even, we've removed it totally, so we'll acknowledge now for the record that it has been moved to the May 18th, and the meeting will be carried to the May 18th. Is that okay?
Right, and you should renotice it again also, Collette, okay?
Renotice? Okay, you got it.
Yeah, yeah, I think you should probably renotice it as well, okay?
You got it, Mr. Law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along to Business Administrator, uh, Mr. Fred Carr?
Thank you, Collette. I have nothing.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Moving on to Township Clerk, I do not have a report at this time, so we're going to move along to the township offices and committees. Anything from that? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move along. The engineering report, because it's an agenda meeting, I'm just going to allow the council administration to simply review the engineering report. I'll give you a minute or so, and then we'll move on. Okay, moving along to bids. Taken April 8th, 2021, one new 2021 Type 3 Class 1 modular ambulance for Precipity Volunteer Ambulance Squad. April 15th, 2021, Edwards Road Improvements Program. April 21st, 2021, one new air compressor for Water Department. April 22nd, 2021, Craftsman Farms White Cottage Phase 1 Rehabilitation, to be taken bids. May 5th, 2021, supplying various materials for various township departments. May 13th, 2021, the lease of public property. May 19th, 2021, construction of parasetic acid storage tank and metering station. Quotations, proposals, qualifications, none. At this time, um, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing, please.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Carrify. Roll call, Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson? Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is now open to the public to speak on any matter. Just a quick reminder to the public, you guys can speak on any matter you'd wish. However, please be advised, this is not a back and forth between you and the administration or the council. You will speak and have your five minutes, and after that, the administration or council will then address your questions or concerns if they are able to at this time. With that being said, let's go ahead and take a look at any volunteers or participants. Okay, at this time, I am seeing, uh, Mr. Ken Dolsky. Can we please unmute Ken?
Good evening, Ken Dolsky, 2115 Drive. I just want to say thank you very much for putting the Forest Management Resolution on the agenda, and I look forward to its passage in two weeks. Um, I cannot physically come to that meeting, so I will thank you in advance. Um, and, Collette, if you could send me a copy of it in its current form before it's signed, that would be great. If not, I understand, um, and, you know, would like to see it after it's been, it's been passed.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, if you would send it to me, just so I can look it over. Thank you very much. Um, I would just like to make a comment regarding, you know, meetings going forward. I think it would be helpful and, but also generate more public participation if the meetings were both in-person and virtual, so that for people who could not make the meeting, you know, in, you know, physically, who may be running late or just, you know, want to hear a part of the meeting or whatever, that they be able to attend virtually, I think, uh, it would, it would help more people participate in the process. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ken. And just, Ken, just to quickly answer that, um, we appreciate your comment and concern about the virtual hearing, but at this time, the township does not have that capability, maybe sometime in the near future, but we don't know about that. So for now, we're going to only stay to virtual, and you can always watch the meetings. They're always going to be recorded. If not, we have the minutes that you can review, or you can always contact me. Thank you, Ken. Moving along. Nick Homiak, can we please unmute Nick?
He can hear me.
Yes, Nick, how are you?
Okay, I'm awful glad, glad that Ken's forest plan is a part of the resolution. And for anyone's interested, you can, uh, there's a great video by Leslie Sawyer on pro-forestation. She's an expert in the field, and she has an educational you could find on YouTube on the Highlands, and if you have any. And if you have any doubts why all three of these plans shouldn't be flawed, let her educate and enlighten your mind with her wisdom. I am disappointed in this really wimping out of the plastic bag ban, and it was done by the businesses, not the town. They chose that they weren't going to obey the ban, and that's a fact. And from my experience at Foodtown, I, I, it was just ridiculous that they had that much power to overturn an ordinance. And it just proved to me that they, you know, they care about pennies instead of what they're doing to the environment that's costing us all. And they've already were educated on this, as residents are with source separation, the cleanup North Beverwood that began in March 2013 that fizzled out. It's like, you know, we keep on finding these excuses to let people not support their community in ways that it's just easy. Just, you know, clean your immediate spaces. Every time we have a wind event now, we have these cans blown over, especially with the plastics. And the plastics are all over, and a lot of people, they just, they leave it there. So that's another ordinance. Their cans must not be secure. But again, where's the enforcements? And Noel, the Noel Golf Course gave their word that they would start their own plastic ban as an example. As far as I know, I haven't heard any word about them. I had several suggestions about a carry-in, carry-off the golf course, and then having coded recycle stations that the golfers could bring them their things back. There's no excuse why they can't do that, or why I was not able to get any feedback about that. Simply because, uh, I don't know, I'm not, it's a public utility, but apparently the public has no, no input into it. So if you care about something and want to make it better, I guess if you're not in with the in crowd, you don't count. So they have those Styrofoam cups at the Noel, and I, I can't think of anything worse than Styrofoam in the plastic pollution litter stream. There's a political sign that's at the end of Edwards Road and Vale Road at the junction, and it's on the Kentwood Green Acres property. Now, I believe that's against the rules for posting political signs. And I remember when I was, I had some signs for Mr. Nelson. I got a phone call, and I was a suspect of putting signs on, in public property. It wasn't me, because I knew the rules, but I was a reprimand, or I was told, like, you know, you're not supposed to do this. But apparently, we have a double standard. Some people do it, some people don't. But I think that the signs on the public property, if these people are going to run for office, they should obey the rules. And I think the, that sign on the Kentwood Green Acres should be removed. That's my opinion. And, and the particular candidate for that, in my opinion, was against the Green Acres during the
30 seconds, Nick.
During the Waterview, he ran to, for, to help make it Green Acres, and then he turned after he got elected. And I find it offensive that that particular sign is on a green acre property, the Kentwood Green Acres. All right, I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, Nick. Let's go ahead and mute Nick. Next, we have Ram Sridharan. Ram, are you there? Let's unmute Ram.
Yes.
How are you, Ram?
Good, good. How are you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ram Kedren. I'm from number four Autumn Bridge Road. And I belong to Glenmont's community. And I'm, you know, coming here again to see, you know, if we have any progress in terms of, you know, when would the dedication of the roads will occur? We believe it's a straightforward case, you know, like, you know, the township has been supporting us with the, with the snow blowing, cleaning, and everything that needs, that requires for a road to be maintained. We have a lot of residents here, and a lot of people are anxious about these roads. We are not understanding, like, why is this taking like 10 months to, to resolve? When this, you know, community has been built like about 10 years ago, or more than 10 years ago. Just wanted to, you know, understand, I mean, how we can help to, to resolve this. We even sent the maps on all the roads within the community, as requested by, at one of the previous meetings. And we, whatever that is required, will more, we are more than happy to, to provide. But we just wanted to see if we can help bring this to a resolution. That's it for me. But thanks for an opportunity to let me speak here.
Hold on, mute.
Thank you, Council President, and Ram, thank you for your comments. Any, any member want to, I think we've already addressed that. Does anybody want to address Ram and that concern, or we're okay, we're going to move on? Okay. With that being said, let's go ahead and move on. Okay, so we have no one else from the public that would like to speak, so seeing, seeing no one else, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Take a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Cariffy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Cariffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson? Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, floor is closed. Moving along, we're going down into the budget section. The second reading and a public hearing for ordinance number 202109, special emergency appropriation in the amount of $5 million certified by the Director of the Division of Local Government Services set forth in NJSA 40A:453L and/or NJSA 40A:4-53M. The notice for ordinance 202109 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, on April 26, 2021. The ordinance was introduced at the April 20, 2021 regular meeting. Can I have a motion to accept the 202109 ordinance, please? Be heard in the second and final reading? Can I get a motion? So we, we just need a motion in a second to, you know, to, to allow it to be heard, and then we can have discussions in the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to allow it to be heard.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Cariffy. Roll call, Mr. Cariffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, so before, before we go into the public hearing, is there any discussion on this ordinance?
I have a question for Mr. Ribé.
Well, Mr. Cariffy, before we do that, Council President, would you prefer that we go into discussion now or make a motion to the public hearing and then go into discussion?
Oh, let's go into discussion ourselves first.
Okay, perfect. So, Councilmember Cariffy, I apologize for cutting you off.
Mr. Ribé, I just have a question. I know it was said that we would pay this bond, this loan back, a million dollars a year. How are you proposing that we're going to raise this million dollars a year to, to pay back?
Well, $1 million represents a little over one tax point, meaning .01. Having some economies within the budget would pretty much offset that amount. A prime example of that is like next year, we will not have the one, over $1 million increase that we had in 2021 for the pension system. Just that one by itself takes care of that first payment. We can also add the second portion of the American Rescue Plan, which you are supposed to get in 2022. We're just going to get 50% in 2021.
Okay.
Well, I, I have a comments to make on this. First of all, has the township auditor endorsed the township budget?
Yes, sir.
We haven't seen that. Any place?
Well, in this case, auditors, as independent individuals that they're supposed to be, they try not to make a formal opinion in those regards. But we have conversations, and when we submitted the application back at the beginning of December of 2020, it was cognizant of the fact that the finances of this, of the township just didn't have the strength to come up with the budget without borrowing. We knew that we would have a shortfall in revenues, and that's what causes these ordinance.
Valerie submitted some irregularities in the budget that she reviewed. By the way, she received the budget the same time we did, which is like, what, three weeks ago? Four weeks ago at the most, which is a heck of a thing, that we get a budget this late in the year. But she had some, some irregularities that needed to be clarified before she would certify the budget. And what you're telling me now is you've corrected these irregularities, and she certified the budget?
I may not call them irregularities, sir, with all due respect. I called them, she received the draft. And that draft was meant to be cleared up once the ordinance was approved, because we were working against time. Trying to introduce it on time, trying to beat some deadlines, it was party. But in terms of the meat of the budget, there's not any irregularity. Just because many, many
I'll repeat the question again. Has our, has our township auditor certified the budget that she reviewed?
She, she?
What, either yes or no?
No, because they're working on the draft. She has made changes to the annual financial statement, which trigger an impact on the budget. Until those changes are finalized, there's not certification to be provided.
All right, then I have, this is, this is confusing. First of all, the council has not seen a budget by Precipiny Township that has been certified by its auditor yet. And yet you want us to approve a $5 million loan when we haven't even seen a legitimate budget yet?
That is exactly right, sir, and that requirement doesn't come from us. It comes from the state, which is based on conversations that they had with Valerie specifically. So the imposition from the state came via Valerie. They had a conversation and said, she was instructed, that she indicated by email, that she had to revise the AFS because something needed to be corrected. Otherwise, they, they would have interpreted as double counting of the amounts that we had in the, in the AFS and what we were requesting as a special emergency note in order to balance the budget.
Well, I, I see no option here that I'm comfortable with, borrowing $5 million. I believe this year we should be increasing taxes and borrowing some money, but there should be a combination. Not just simply borrowing money to balance the budget and kicking the can down the road, which is really what we're doing. I believe next year, we will not have the million dollars. I, I don't believe we will have it, and I think we're going to have a drastic tax increase next year if we just kick the can down the road.
I entirely agree with you, sir, and I'm taking the initiative. I know Fred probably has to say something about it, but there's some clarity that needs to be provided to this conversation. When we came up with the $5 million, that was not a cold number that we just pushed through the window. That came after an extensive amount of analysis. Even if we wanted to increase taxes this year to 5%, we wouldn't be allowed to do that. Because the budget makeup of 2020 prevented essentially 2021 from increasing the, the amount to be raised over 2%, which means that at this moment, as we speak, we are above one of the two caps, either the levy cap or the appropriations cap. So we have to find economies, because the budget simply wouldn't allow us to increase beyond 2%. That's the conundrum that we have. So it has to be a combination of borrowing and cut to certain appropriations, definitely.
And yet the mayor has $110,000 in bonuses in this budget.
Councilman, I will, so those are increases in the salary in support of the Grace Kelly Report, which, you know, this is the second year predominantly of those, 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 those reports. If the council remember last November, last November, we submitted to the council our documentation, which we, which Juan did extensively showing our loss of revenues over a three-year average. And the council passed a resolution submitting that documentation to DCA. Somewhere along that process, between that documentation going to DCA, and sometime this spring, the annual financial statement was incorrectly submitted. When the corrections were then made by the auditor, it changed our budget considerably to the tune of, you know, $1.8 million deficit, which was not there before. In your conversations with the auditor, I don't know if they mentioned their inaccuracies of the annual financial statement that they submitted. And we're now working and collecting that. The, the budget that we submitted to the council, that we had prepared for the council, based on that $5 million bonding, has not changed. The reason that we recommend this $5 million borrowing, other than the fact that the state allows it, is because we have a substantial budgetary shortfall in the township. Now, I understand our, our proclivity of, of wanting to borrow money, you know, if you will, robbing Peter to pay Paul. But as we said last year in the fall, when we raised sewer water rates by 39%, Council President, there's no money left in the water of the sewer utility to borrow, even if you wanted to.
I don't want to borrow from them, but the fund balance in the township itself, not the utilities, the fund balance in the township is $600. Now, any, any accountant will tell you that fund balance should be at least 10 to 15% of the budget.
Correct.
This doesn't come anywhere, $600 doesn't come anywhere near $10 million to $15 million.
Correct. Part of that, so last year, if you remember, Council President, you, you, the council did not pass the increase of the levy cap. So we were stuck at 2%. You know, many municipalities have that increase of the levy cap to 3.5% as, as an option in case things happen. Not that you're going to do it, but the council chose not to do that. That's their choice. But now Juan and I are dealing with that implication, you know, that, that ramification of that. I mean, we've already had, Juan and I and the department heads have had numerous conversations. We spent about a considerable time in March bringing the budget to the council while taking a million dollars of substantial reductions out of the current budget. Now, we can raise taxes, absolutely. And we can do a combination of raising taxes or reduction of services. But right now, we need to get to that number or make some substantial decisions, Council President, on what we don't want to do.
Well, what I would like to propose is that we borrow $3 million. And that would produce a tax increase of $343 a year, but it would give us a fund balance that we could begin to operate with.
If, if I can interject, just keep in mind, Council President, I provided some analytical detail by email. The combination of loss of revenues that we have in 2021 is approximately $9 million. Of those, those $9 million are made up of the following. $3.1 million approximately loss of shortfall in revenues from 2020. And that comes from the majority of the revenue items, with the exception of free ABC licenses and lease of township assets and state aid. All of the remaining All of the remaining revenue items are shortfalls. We have $450,000 that we cannot anticipate as revenues from surplus funds of the utilities because they need them to balance their own budget. Same situation happens with the sewer utility. $2.1 million anticipated in 2020, they're not available for 2021. On top of that, from that revision of the AFS that Fred mentioned, we had a loss in surplus funds of one, almost $1.6 million. When you add also the $1.8 million of deficit that has to be added as a new line item of appropriation, that tallies to almost $9 million. We need request $5 million is because the other four, we have made a huge exercise trying to come up with the remainder of those revenues. Besides, uh, when you approve, if you decide to do so, sir, uh, the ordinance, it doesn't mean that we aren't necessarily going to borrow the full amount. But that's what would allow us to double this budget. Whatever amount is not borrowed, then can be canceled by resolution.
All of this, this fighting good, but I still think to make the township financially viable, we need to have, as much as I don't like a tax increase, we need to have a tax increase this year.
We, we will have it, but just keep in mind that the tax increase is determined by the caps, not by us. At the moment, with the new influx of revenues that we expect from, uh, the federal government, 50% is supposed to arrive to our coffers within the next few days. Adding that 50% to the mix that I already mentioned, still we have a 6.4 deficit remaining. And we have a problem meeting the appropriations cap, meaning that we have to cut down those appropriations. If we have to do that, that automatically decreases the tax rate. Mr. Bush, we're pinned against the wall.
I, maybe I'm, maybe I'm dense, but I still don't understand why we can't correct ourselves by having a tax increase this year.
Because the levy cap wouldn't allow it. The appropriations cap, we maxed them already. There's a limit which is set up by a rather complicated set of calculations that come from the state. They come directly from the law.
Do you understand this?
Um, you know, I understand it, but just let me explain what, what my concern is, you know? Um, you know, as I've said before and since I've been on council, the town's been operating in a, in a deficit for the past 12 years and relying heavily on utilities. And we understood that it wasn't sustainable. It isn't sustainable. And this is the result of it. But I don't think it's all a result of 2020. This is something that, uh, has been coming for a while. And, um, and I think this is the most important document that the administration prepares and that the council, uh, you know, that the council approves. Um, and the $5 million is an integral part of that budget. And you know, i- if the $5 million is necessary, I'll approve it. But, you know, I really have to say that, that that hasn't really been demonstrated. Um, you know, I mean, I remember in the past, you know, Paul and I are on the finance committee. And in the past, um, there were meetings held with the finance committee to kind of get an understanding of, of, of what was in the budget and get any, um, recommendations from us. And as far as I know, I mean, I haven't been contacted. I don't know about you, Paul.
No, no.
No, so, I mean, that was disappointing. Um, I think it's very, very difficult to talk about numbers. And, and, um, I just wish we had had more information about this. You know, e- even I, I, I'm, I'm hard pressed to just approve the $5 million without really having a real good understanding. There's the auditor's issues that I don't think we've been fully, uh, that, that there's been any full understanding about why the auditor didn't sign off on the budget, what the technical issues were, how those technical issues were involved, were resolved. Um, you know, I think that this has to be a combination of borrowing, raising additional revenue and cutting expenses. Uh, but, but have we, have we gotten to that, uh, that point where we're comfortable that all of those things have, have come together to, to create this budget? That maybe, maybe we don't need $5 million. We're at, are we, are we, we're not at the cap of 2%? Um, what would that do to the budget? I mean, I really am disappointed that we haven't had more, uh, discussion on this. And, and you know, I, I've got a feeling that, that, uh, y- you know, that I'm being asked to approve $5 million. And I really have to say, no one's talked to me. You know, I mean, I've made some conversation and Juan has been extremely helpful in, in, uh, in helping to understand this. But, um, you know, I think it's a, a thing that the whole council has to understand and be comfortable with. Um, and, and I, I see from the conversation that they're just not there yet. Uh, you know, I don't know what to say. I don't know why this is so late in the year. Um, if those, if those proposals and estimates were made back in December. Um, you know, I, I just feel like I have an obligation to the taxpayers here to fully understand this. Um, and, and you know, and right now, I don't. But as I said, I do appreciate all the, the information that, and the discussions that I've had with Juan.
I have, um, I have Loretta. Loretta, are you there?
Yes, I am. Uh, I think I'm making motion that we table the items until we get additional information from our auditors. Uh, I have to agree with Janet that we have an obligation to our residents to know exactly what we are using this money for and, and why we need this $5 million. So I'm making a motion to table, to table the $5 million.
Did everybody hear that? Or I, I, I'll repeat it. Uh, so Ms. Grignani has indicated for the record that she wanted to make a motion to table this ordinance until more information is received. She stated that she agrees with Ms. McCarthy, that they need additional information uh, to know how the money is being spent. So for those reasons, she stated that she has a motion to, uh, table the ordinance.
Well, I'll answer that motion too. I, I want to be convinced that we, we have sufficient revenue to pay this $5 million back at a million dollars a year for the next five years. Because I have no confidence that we'll be able to do that either, unless we have a whopping big tax increase next year.
Okay, so, uh, we, at this point, any, anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to appreciate, I'd appreciate what, what Emily and Paul have to say as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's why I asked the question of how we're gonna raise the million dollars each year to pay this back.
If I can interject.
Sorry, go ahead.
If I can interject, it'll be raised every year through the normal budgeting process, just like a normal appropriation, it'll be part of it.
I think that that's hard to hear because every year we have been asked to cut. And there's a, uh, i- if we're asked to accept that a million dollars could be raised for this, I think of all of the things that a million dollars has not been able to be raised for. So maybe I am looking at history through rose-colored glasses and I don't remember accurately. Fellow members of council, please correct me. But I do feel like we had extensive meetings and opportunities in the building process so that by the time we got to a place where it was our turn to vote, we all agreed behind closed doors and we all knew that we were on board before the vote came before us. And while COVID is a factor, I don't feel like that transparency was at play here. Not for the full council, it sounds like not for the finance committee. And so we don't, we haven't had an opportunity as professionals to talk either in closed session or in special meetings that were, you know, publicly noticed to say, can we hash out what this is about before we're on the dais making a major, major decision? And it feels a little on the spot for us to say, yes, not because, one, you haven't done an incredible job communicating to us, but it feels like we haven't had the opportunity to work as a team to say, this is a process that we are all behind and we're being asked to do it in the public eye, which we all, I think, we all trust each other, the five members of council at this point trust each other, that we can hash things out and come to agreement, even when they're tough and there are, you know, concessions that have to be made on both sides. I think we've proven that we're very good at that and we haven't had the opportunity to do that. So I will second Loretta's motion and perhaps that can be something that can be added to the calendar.
Okay, so we have, uh, a motion to table made by Loretta and it's seconded by Ms. Peterson. Uh, before I go into roll call, uh, anything else?
So I, I have one thing just to, so as we move forward in this budget process and try to answer the council's questions, I just want, uh, you know, the council to fully understand that this is a conversation of math. Uh, and this $5 million is an integral part, the, the revenue, however you want to call it. You want to call it the $5 million special emergency note? You want to call it a raising taxes? Or you want to talk about a reduction in personnel and services to make up this number? It's going to be a math conversation that Juan and I are gonna start tomorrow morning. And, uh,
They're asking you to include us in that conversation.
We're good, you know, we, we have no problems with that. Uh, and so, uh, so I will take the, I will take the hit in not including the finance committee. Uh, frankly, I didn't know we had one till just now, Councilwoman. Uh, Juan didn't come on till October. Uh, most budget years, the finance officer is here all year. Uh, he doesn't show up in, you know, the 10th of April uh, and get, and get handed a $110 million budget and say, figure this out. Uh, so he has worked considerably and trying, and that's why we were late. That, that's the only reason. We would have been up on time like normal, uh, at the end of February with budget hearings. Uh, but we were still grasping with a lot of different issues that had to do with the budget. So we'll work on with the council president and Coled to work on some budget hearings and try to answer the questions prior to the council's introduction.
You know, I, I, I don't, I don't know that anybody's making any recommendations to do anything before we understand.
Absolutely. We agree. We agree.
I'm not saying, you know, and as I said before, maybe it's some combination of borrowing, reducing some of the expenses, um, when we get a chance to look at them. Um, you know, and one of the questions I have is, I know we talked about amortizing the debt over a longer period of time. Um, and, and you know, and I understand that, but does that, uh, does that also increase interest, Juan?
It, it will decrease interest. It's not good for, uh, credit rating, but that was done last year too. Uh, we refinanced close to $51 million. That was the first challenge when I came to the job mid-October. And, uh, so we have, did a big refinancing and we have, uh, a rather large debt service. Uh, extending the amortization period sometimes helps you with the makeup of the budget, but it doesn't help in the long term because you pay more interest.
And I think statu-, I think statutorily for a special emergency, we're only allowed to do five years.
We could extend it, Fred, to 10 years, but that would need to be approved by the local finance board and then I would, I would recommend doing that.
Going down to the finance board? No, I won't do that.
Yeah, that would make it a little more convoluted than it needed to be.
Yeah, and I mean, and I'm not, uh, and, and believe me, I'm not criticizing. I understand what a difficult job it was to do this year, uh, for both Juan and Fred. Um, and, you know, it's just unfortunate. And as Emily said, I mean, it, it's a hard call for us to make as well to just approve the $5 million with that information because I'm sure you both agree that it's difficult to talk about numbers without really seeing them and, and being comfortable with them, so.
I, I think we're perfect, I think we perfectly understand it. Fred mentioned that he didn't know about the existence of the finance committee, same here. So I told you, I was, uh, asking myself if there was gonna happen this kind of meeting, which we had to make discuss, have discussions with the finance committee, but I didn't even know about the existence of one. So the timing of Fred and myself coming here is exactly when some of these challenges should have, should have already been clear. So we find ourselves in the middle of the volcano and we have been just fighting, trying to do what is right from, uh, from the get-go.
No, and I appreciate it. And looking at our budget, I, I commend you. So, um, but I agree that I table it for now.
All right, so we have, uh, a motion on the floor by Ms. Grignani, a second by, um,
Just one more thing, just so that I'm clear, okay? There is no legal way we could increase taxes this year? Is there any legal way we can increase taxes this year?
Well, uh, the legal way to do it exceeding the caps, we already missed the deadline. That was April 20th to call a referendum and then ask the question to constituents within the community if they wanted the increase.
But you didn't give us the budget in time to even come to that.
Well, I'll leave it as not.
You gave us the budget after the deadline.
Tell them. Tell them.
Though, though, Council President, you had the budget before that April 20th deadline. It would have been earlier, remember, in my conversation previously when the auditor, you know, uh, had the incorrect, the, the AFS. She submitted the wrong AFS. We were working off the wrong AFS. Okay, by the auditor. Okay, so that, that led the whole budget to be thrown in a quandary when she made those comments and indicated to you, uh, you know, about her concerns to the budget.
What is a, I'm sorry, what is an AFS?
The annual financial statement. The annual financial statement talks about, it's done traditionally either by the CFO or the auditor. It's sort of a snapshot in time of the revenues and projections of the town. Sort of balancing the books and she and they, the, 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 they made a hash of it.
Given the complications, sorry, Fred, given the complications of the finances at the end of the year, we divided the job. So the auditors took the annual financial statement while I took the budget and, uh, some other associated jobs about, uh, trying to close the books for year eight. That's, that's a huge job. We don't have all of the skills required in order to take all of those jobs over our shoulders, just coming to the job. So they took the annual financial statement and from there, it's where the problems came. We had a balanced budget. And then, uh, these numbers needed to be tweaked, these needed to be rearranged because of some error in the calculation of the surplus funds.
I suggest, Council, uh, keep that in mind when, uh, the contract comes due to renew with the auditor. Uh, perhaps we can have a discussion about performance.
Okay, uh, with all that being said, um, we have a motion on the floor to table ordinance 2021 colon 09. The motion was made by Ms. Grignani and seconded by Ms. Peterson. Um, I will go now into roll call. Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Martha.
Ms. Peterson?
I'm a yes, but you skipped Janice.
Oh, Ms. McCarthy, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, we have, um, five yeses at this time. The motion is tabled until further notice. Moving on to ordinances, introduction and second reading. Again, this is an agenda meeting, so no action. I'll give you guys a minute just to review those ordinances that are, uh, under ordinances.
Coled?
Yes.
Is number nine under this ordinance, under these ordinances? That's about a blue auditor?
Uh, number nine. Number nine, uh, is under the resolutions under the consent agenda, uh, speaking about award for a contract for professional accounting services. So we'll get to that one, Ms. Grignani, and I will, uh, I will address your concern then.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our ordinance is number two, the, um, uh, the cannabis ordinance. uh, the cannabis ordinance, ordinance twenty one, twenty twenty one ten. Uh, we, we need to table that or cancel it? Mr. Luck?
Um, I would recommend that we table that ordinance because I was informed that, uh, I was directed to, um, prepare a, a, a amendment that will be substantial, that will have to be re-noticed. So it was scheduled for second reading on the eighteenth. I think we should, we should table that and probably introduce the amendments, uh, on, on the eighteenth, Captain President.
Okay. So then we just need amendments. We don't need to fill this and introduce a new one.
Well, yeah, correct. We'll, we'll introduce a new ordinance on the eighteenth.
Well, if we're going to introduce a new ordinance, shouldn't we?
We.
Fill this?
We, we, we should table this one, all right, uh, until such time as we can, as we can make the introduction.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We need a motion to table. Twenty twenty one ten.
Motion.
Grignani table.
So we have a motion by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani, um. Roll call. Mr. Corriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DePiero?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Luck, can I be involved with you and Susan Pavate on, uh, the zoning that we're going to allow this?
Yeah, absolutely. As I said, we're, we're, we're doing some technical work this week. Hope to have a draft out to you early next week, council president.
Well, I'd like to be involved. My concern is that we're very specific on the zoning so that it's, it's locations where they have access to the highways and, and not local roads. Um, so that, you know, if you just say B one or R O L, there's a lot of those and, and it might put them in places we don't want anything.
Mr. Council President, I, I've directed them to take those into account as well, but.
And, and council president, we'll, we'll, we'll certainly include you in that discussion. We're trying to get a date for either Thursday or Friday. I'll send you an email with some times, okay?
Can I, uh, I'd like to, is it okay if I join?
Uh, no more than two, yes.
More than two. You and me, Janice.
Okay, it's us.
I'll, I'll include you on the email also.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, moving along to the non-consent agenda resolutions. Our twenty twenty one dash seventy four endorsing application to the Morris County Board of Commissioners for the installation of a replacement public community water supply well, number twenty on block seven thirty six, lot nine point zero one as a minor diversion. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Corriffy. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along to the consent agenda. At this time, Ms. Grignani, uh, you can ask whatever question you have. I believe you were, uh, uh, asking about, uh, resolution number nine, award of professional accounting services?
Yes, I'd like to know what who the accounting firm is and why are we looking into doing accounting for it?
Uh, this is not a new accounting firm. It's for professional accounting services. These are the people who did the rate, the law, the sewer and rates study last year. In our conversation previously, when we were briefed by Joe Beckmeyer, he talked about some of the plans we had for, um, upgrades or long-term planning in the sewer plant. We need somebody to, to evaluate that at the request of the council. These are the guys who did it before. We're bringing them back online so we can have them to do that work again. This is not replacing the current auditor.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none.
Question on number eleven.
Okay.
What is, what are they really doing? Are we applying for a grant? Is that what that is?
Yes, there's, there's a, let me get this. So we have three or four of them here. Uh, from this is P S and G, it's a two thousand dollar grant to assist us uh, in our, in our continuing, you know, with the green team, uh, to evaluate, you know, energy conservation and things like that. But this, the P S and G small grant program is only two thousand dollars compared with the other group, which are about two hundred and fifty thousand, which are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a piece. It's, it helps pay for those consultants that we are hiring to assist with the ongoing energy projects.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's number thirteen?
So, number thirteen, give me a second here so I can find the correct one. There aren't any numbers on them. Urban Parks, yeah, Urban Parks Initiative Enabling Resolution. So if you look at the resolution, it's a five hundred thousand dollar application to the state of New Jersey to assist in the basketball and tennis courts at, at Puddingstone Park.
Are we calling that an urban park?
Well, that's, well, I don't. But that's what the name of the grant is, and I'm going to go with what they can call the grant, anything they want if they give me five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. Good point.
Maybe it's just a house next door. I mean, I don't know. I, you know, it could go either way.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't make up the time. I don't make up the titles.
All right. Anything else by council? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move, um, move along to the approval of the payroll and bills list. CFO Juan Arribay recommends authorization for payment. Number one, authorizes payment of the April thirtieth, twenty twenty one, regular payroll estimated at one point eight million. And number two, uh, payment of bills from bachelor list of, uh, May first, twenty twenty one through May third, twenty twenty one, estimate totaling two million, one hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred and two hundred and fifty six cents. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Take a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Corriffy, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, at this time, we're going to go into the executive session. Before I be, uh, begin the resolution, we go to executive session. I would like to announce to the public that, uh, we do not anticipate any public action be taken. Uh, so if you'd like to sign off, you may do so at this time. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, uh, PL nineteen seventy five, chapter thirty one permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. Whereas the township councils have the opinion that such circumstances presently exist. And whereas a township council wishes to discuss litigations and arbitrations, James Corriffy versus Township Precipity Troy Hills, various matters known as Corriffy one and Corriffy four, and PBA Local one thirty one, a Superior Officers Association, Corriffy related arbitrations, and public contract and concessionaire agreement, no golf course. And whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the township council, the township of Precipity Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Could I have a motion to adjourn into closed session?
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, uh, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
All right. Uh, with that being said, if you could bring us into closed session, please. Hey, we're now back in public portion. Could I have a motion to reconvene into open session?
Motion.
Can you get a second?
Second.
Motion to reconvene to open session made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. Corriffy, um, Ms. Corriffy's not here, Mr., uh, no. Ms. Grignani also had to leave, so we have, uh, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Okay. Could I also have now a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Well, second.
Second, whatever.
Seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Uh, roll call, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Good night, everyone, and thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. Good night, everyone.